Good morning, we're ready to begin, thank you.
I'd like to call or order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Friday, April 18th, 2025. Ms. Bennett, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Beach.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Colliday.
Here. Here.
We have a quorum and you can proceed.
Thank you, hearing that we have nobody there for in-person public comment, which we normally allow, moving on to the written comments that were submitted, Ms. Bennett, could you please provide a summary of the written comments submitted for today's meeting?
Yes, Chair, we received seventeen public comments for today's meeting, those were distributed to the commissioners and staff prior to today's meeting and are included online in the meeting materials, those comments will also be included in today's minutes.
Thank you. On to item number four, the minutes, review of the minutes from the February 28th, 2025 Board of Commissioners open meeting have been provided for review by the board, are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
So, motion.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passed. On to item number five for today, which is a report of the President, Mr. Roach, do you have a report?
I do, good morning Commissioners. So, it is budget season, FY26, and because it is budget season, we, you all have already gone through the approval process as far as the Board of Commissioners is concerned, now we've moved on to the approval from each of our governing bodies. And I would really appreciate your understanding, moving these budgets forward quickly is really of interest and very good for us to do so. In fact, I've asked under and have emailed all of you, St. Clair County Transit District has already advanced and approved at their board meeting on Tuesday. And so I have their agreement, which I would like your authorization to go ahead and execute, so I have walked that into this meeting, this just helps us move through promptly, it's very, very helpful. I would note that the contract is exactly the same as last year, exactly, except for just the normal 1.5 percentage increase. Really, really appreciate the Transit District and of course, Mr. Sharkey's continued partnership in moving this together expeditiously, I will have Tammy comment on that, she has reviewed it as consistent with last year as well. We will put it on the agenda item so that it is within the public realm when we go to our June meeting as well, just to be sure we're very, very thorough with with that, but I do ask for your approval on item 11. But, but, but the other funders are also moving along very nicely, we've already done a presentation to the St. Louis County Transportation Commission, that, that meeting went well, I actually met again with the county executive yesterday, also went well, and we were, he mentioned that the council was looking to get by state's budget out of the way by May, that would be record-setting, I would be thrilled to get it done, I'm, I'm very close. So I really, really appreciate moving the other agreements through and St. Clair County is just checking one off, off my list. Oh, in addition, I am meeting with the City of St. Louis, actually, right after this meeting. So all three funders are moving along expeditiously, the sooner I get full approval of that FY26, the better, and it's very helpful to me and to staff that we move these important contracts through, so very much appreciate that. One other, just very quick add, as we do read and are very careful about the public comments, and we do try to be very proactive about those public comments and, and reach out to folks. And for instance, you may have noticed over the past couple of weeks, there has been a group known as the St. Louis Urbanists who have not been happy about some of the gates. So, I want to applaud, applaud Kevin Scott and his group, especially Missy Webb, who then invited that group to the real-time camera center, showed them how all of this is working, worked with those advocates, and really showed them how we're really interested in what people say, but, but we have a plan in place, the gates are going up and they're going to create a better product overall, so it was really kind of interesting and I want to, I want to assure the board that we look at all of those public comments, we try to address them one at a time, and I just want to be sure that you all know that we are proactively moving along on that, on that basis. And Chairman, that concludes my remarks this morning. And thank you for all of your time today.
Thank you, and certainly some, some good news there, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Roach?
Yes, I do. Mister, Mister Roach, speaking on the comment cards today, there was about seventeen issues that was raised, can you tell us update on the Fair Collection System, because I, I believe that if that system gets in place, those type of comments that we're hearing repeatedly may be slowed down.
Yes, I can, I, they are, it is going well, and it is in parallel with the Secure Platform Plan. I would note that all of the readers associated with that are completely in the whole bus fleet, which is a very, very nice move. As a matter of fact, right now, we, you can download the the app, which is attached to the new Fair System, now, we're really beta-testing that among staff and seeing how it works. I've done so and put some money on it and tried to be sure that we can make the readers make the right sounds. That's very good news, so we are moving forward on that, it might make sense for me to also add to our next meeting an update from Tom Curran, who can, that's the parallel, he is heading that Fair Collection project, so let me, let me commit to doing that at our next meetings as.
Yes, I'd, I'd appreciate that, and if he could just give us a more definitive, maybe a timeframe when that project will come to a completion.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions for Mr. Roach? Okay, hearing none, moving on to item six, which is the report of the Operations Committee, do we have a report?
We do, good morning. One, a virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on March 21st, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. Minutes of that meeting included in the meeting materials today under item number six. The Operations Committee is recommending approval of eight items that are noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Item Number 10. So I, A, or number one, Contract Award, Southwestern Illinois Freight Railroad Network Analysis. Resolution 144. Item B, Contract Award, Dealer Phone Service Resolution 1415. Items, Contract Award on Call, Contract Award, On Call Public Relations and Media Services, Resolution 1416. Item D, Contract Modification, CADA System CTC Upgrade, can't help you with the acronyms, I'm sorry, Resolution 1417. E, Contract Modification, Public Address Consumer Information System, Resolution 1418. Item F, Contract Modification, Testing of Fire Protection System and Fire Extinguishers Maintenance Services, Resolution 1419. Item G, Contract Action, Chevello Security Information and Management Solutions, Resolution 1420. And item H, Contract Modification, Micro Transit Project Contract Extension, Resolution 1421. The Operations Committee is recommending approval of two additional items on the Consent Agenda, which are approved at the, which were approved at the committee's March Executive Session Meeting and are noted as Consent Agenda Item Number 10. Item K, Cooperation Agreement for the Construction, Operation, and Maintenance of the Brick Line Greenway, Resolution 1424. And item L, HB Strategies Government Consulting Contract, Resolution 1425. In addition, at the March Committee Meeting, an Operations Report and a Workforce Update was provided by Mr. Chuck Stewart, Executive Vice, Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, Metro Transit. This concludes the report of the Operations Committee.
Thank you for that report, moving on to item number eight. Oh, excuse me, I skipped one, item number seven, which is the Report of the Audit, Finance, and Administrative, and Administration Committee, do we have a report here?
We do, Mr. Chair, good morning, everyone. A virtual meeting of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee was held on March 21st, 2025, immediately following the Operation Committee Meeting. The draft minutes of the meeting are included in the meeting materials under today's item number seven. The AFA Committee is recommending approval of one item, which is noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Number 10. Number one, Contract Award Stock List Office Supplies Resolution Number 1422. Also, at the Committee Meeting, several informational items were presented, including Pension Plans 401K Retirement Savings Program, and OPEB Trust Investment Performance Update as of December 31st, 2024, Financial Statements, Treasurer's Report, and Treasury Safety Report. This concludes my report of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee, thank you.
Thank you for that report, moving on to item number eight, which is the Report of the Safety and Security Committee, please proceed with that report.
Thank you, a virtual meeting of the Safety and Security Committee was held on March 13th, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the meeting material day under item number eight. The Committee is recommending approval of one item, which is noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Item Number 10, Threat and Vulnerability Assessment Service Resolutions Number 1423. In addition, at the March Committee Meeting, an update regarding the SPP was presented by Mr. Kevin Scott, General Manager of Security. An executive session was not held, and this concludes my report for the Safety and Security Meeting.
Thank you for that report, moving on to number nine, are there any adjustments to the consent, to the Consent Agenda, excuse me? Okay, hearing none, if there are no adjustments, I will entertain a motion and a second to the, to pursue, excuse me, to approve the Consent Agenda as referenced in the committee reports and as outlined on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passed. Moving on to item number 11, which is Unscheduled Business, there is one item noted for unscheduled business, the Reauthorization of the Secondary City of St. Louis Department Deputy Sheriff's MOU, I will ask Greg Lenares for his comments on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this contract is exactly identical to the one that we previously had for secondary law enforcement services with the St. Louis City Sheriff's Office, the only change is the name of the sheriff, that's why we felt comfortable in walking this on, Sheriff Alfred Montgomery, his name is replacing Sheriff Vernon, Vernon Betts on the bottom. All their terms are identical. And we ask for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passed. Up next, we have the Operations Report, I will ask Mr. Stewart's comments, and this is presented for informational purposes only.
Excuse me, Chairman, gonna, I'd like to go back to item 11 as the proposed walk-on of the St. Clair County Transit District Agreement to get that's a last-minute walk-on that I mentioned in my comments, if that's acceptable, this is the spot to put it in.
Okay, proceed.
All right, very good, so ladies and gentlemen of the board, just appreciate moving this through quickly. As I mentioned, Mr. Sharkey got this through his board at his last meeting that I believe was Tuesday night. It is entirely consistent with what we've seen with last year's agreement, except for the normal percentages that we've already passed through as a board. I always ask, for instance, Tammy and Greg to look over those documents. So, Ms. Perez, can you just comment on the consistent nature of this, of these agreements?
Yes, thank you and good morning, yes, so basically, this contract is exactly the same in writing as the previous, there was some additional insurance information that was required to be added, but other than that, the contract is exactly the same with the exception that there wasn't a 1.5% increase, so the total amount for both the rail and bus is approximately 64.2 million, and then for the ATS, we basically work that contract based on the hours of service, and so everything is exactly the same with the exception of a slight increase in the cost this year for FY26, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Tammy, Tammy, you said the, there was a slight increase, did I hear you say something about the insurance?
It really wasn't related to insurance, it was really related, there was just some format for the contract itself that needed to be updated for insurance-type requirements, but not so much related directly, the amount or the cost wasn't about the insurance specifically.
Fine, thank you.
Sure.
And, and just to clarify, Commissioner Simmons, the, those insurance provisions were approved by the board in a, in a prior meeting, and it's just helping St. Clair County Transit District be sure that their coverage is in place and correct. It's normal things that we do work together, so the, so the board has seen that, nothing new here except for the percentage, and I do appreciate you all allowing me to do this, I just wanted to reward the district for moving so quickly on getting their this through, and it, it takes the burden off of our May and June meetings, so I appreciate the consideration.
Yeah, can we, just so we can clarify the record here, which, what are we asking the board to vote on right now? Because there were a few documents that were sent around right before the meeting, I'm not opposed to, to supporting them, I reviewed them, they sound fine, I just want to make sure that for the purposes of the records and the minutes, whatever we're holding a vote on here, if we do, that would, that we're, we're clear on that.
Uh, yes.
Absolutely.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Tammy, thank you.
There's three agreements, it's the FY26 contract for the rail and service, or the rail service and maintenance agreement, the bus service and maintenance agreement, and then the ATS service maintenance and agreement.
Okay, and then I would just ask, since, since it was a late add, and I, I've had a chance to review these, I'm, I'm, I am fine with them, but I, since it was a late add, I want to make sure that none of the other Commissioners have any questions or have any reason that they need to to review this further before voting on it, because it is, it is a big deal, I think it's a good deal, but I don't want to force people to vote on something they haven't had a chance to review yet, so is there anybody that, that, that thinks for some reason they might need to carry this on to the next meeting? Okay. So we will, I will just ask, let me make sure, again, from Myron and Greg's perspective, that I'm, I'm calling this up the right way, and so it's clearly reflected in the record. Should I just refer to these as the three agreements, or is there another way you would like for me to refer to these as they're voted on?
I think that's fine, you can refer to them as the three agreements, and we will present at the upcoming meeting, we will present the actual resolution, we'll circulate the resolution for you all to review it before Talby signs it, and we'll have that circulated, I don't know, sometime next week, you can see that. So that way, you know, you'll have a chance to actually read the resolution and and then we'll also circulate that resolution and these three agreements in the public agendas and the meeting is going.
Okay, so what, what is the purpose of voting on them today then, if we're going to get the resolutions and vote on them later, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to figure out what we're.
Well, we have to wait two months if we did, we don't want to wait for the full cycles, we're just giving, it'll take a week to prepare the resolution so you can see that.
That's fine, that makes sense, okay, are, are there any, is there any further report or information on these three agreements from Mr. Roach or anybody else on the staff?
My question would be is if we thoroughly go through this and after we have some questions, can we bring that up prior to the resolution? Being it was set, you know, it was a late add on.
Sure, you, of, of course, and talked to, both to Greg and Tammy, we are happy to answer any questions on that, any individual idiosyncrasies, but it is very consistent with last year's agreement, except for the percentage, and I apologize for the clumsiness, I'm just trying to get through as quickly as possible, so, thank you.
Okay, so I will ask if we can get a motion and a second to approve the three agreements as presented. I think that's what we're looking for here, with the understanding then that we will have the resolutions and can have more discussion on those later, correct? Okay, I will ask for.
I make the motion with that stipulation, that we, if we have any questions, it can come up, thank you.
Second. Okay, here a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. All right, the motion passes. That puts us on now to the Operations Report, I will ask Mr. Stewart for comments, this is presented for informational purposes only.
Good morning Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have in your packet your Operations Update and your Workforce Update. I'd like to highlight a few things that are going on right now as we move forward to continuously improve the system and the service that we are offering to the region. We have another service change scheduled for June 16th, we had one just in March, and in those two service changes, we've probably impacted over thirty routes in terms of improvements, tweaking timing, improving reliability, on-time performance, those kinds of things. We're able to do that at this point because we have pretty much reached our goals in terms of staffing, specifically as it relates to, to bus operators and MetroLink operators, and certainly Coloradoite operators. We still are in need of mechanics, and we continue to have hiring events where we're emphasizing the hiring of mechanics, and we are still offering the $5,000 sign-on bonus for mechanics. In terms of Coloradoite operations, which has been an issue for us, a significant issue for us for the last year or so, we continue to improve that operation, we continue to increase the number of trips that we are providing on a weekly basis, again, going from 5,000 over a year ago, 5,000 a week to over 8,000 a week currently, and we continue over the last six months to have zero denials. We continue to improve our phone system, we are continuing the implementation of our spare software system, and I think we're, the public, certainly the, the disabled public, the ADA public is recognizing what we are doing, and they are, are appreciative of the promises that we have kept. One of the public comments in your packet is from Robin Wayland, Robin has been a critic at times, but I'd like to just read one sentence from that comment, it says, "I appreciate the promises being kept so far." Kudos to Metro and your amazing team, it has been a tough ride, but it is getting better. I think that kind of reflects where we are right now as it relates to Coloradoite, and I certainly appreciate that comment from Robin. We continue to, you also have in your packet a report from the Accessibility Advisory Committee, and they are talking about their efforts to move forward, their two areas of focus are training and accessibility, very, very consistent with what we are trying to do internally, providing additional customer service training to our team, and accessibility means not only Coloradoite, but it, it also means fixed route service. In order to really service the community as it relates to ADA or any other type of service, we need to be able to provide the right service for everyone in the right mode. One of the things that's, that's very interesting about this, this success we've had at Coloradoite is that now we are being, the service has gotten so much better that the demand is increasing. So we have a new challenge now, how do we continue to provide this level of service with the resources that we have? So one of those things is to, is to move service, ADA-certified individuals that are able to use our fixed route service, make sure that it is, that it's accessible to them also. So we're working on those things, so it's a good challenge, it's a good place to be, and we, I'd like to give kudos to my team, Coloradoite, our general bus team, our total metro team for the, the work that they are putting in to provide this better service to the community at large. Couple of events coming up in May, Community Connect events will continue in May, we have a May 17th hiring event at North County Transit Center, and probably the most significant thing that I am working on right now is that our contracts with ATU Local 788, where our operators and maintenance team and our clerical team are expiring on June 30. And as you know, that I am expiring on June 30 as well, so we are making a deal, let's try to get it done before June 30. There's some challenges there, we've had a couple of meetings, their requests, they're requesting that, basically, better work-life balance, but also a, a big number in terms of salary increases that goes along with that, so we're working that out internally, trying to figure out where, if we have the resources to do those things, but we also need some concessions as it relates to how we operate. We need to operate more efficiently and more effectively, so there's some things in the contract that we would like to see modified as well. So I will keep you posted on our success with Local 788 with ATU. And lastly, I'd like to extend an, an invitation, so I talked, I think, at a previous meeting about the ride-alongs we had offered to the St. Louis County Council, in terms of riding our system, seeing what's going on out there. I recently did a ride-along with. I recently did a ride-along with Citizens for Modern Transit on MetroLink. Offered ride-alongs to the St. Louis County Transportation Committee at last Monday's meeting. So I'm offering you, come on and ride with us. Ride with, see what's going on out. You know, I'm sure you will learn something. You will experience some things. But you'll learn about what public transit is all about and the, the challenges that we face. But the commitment we have to providing the best possible transit service that we can for this reach. So that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Stewart?
You have a ride-alone schedule, Mr. Stewart?
I don't have anything scheduled right now, okay? But if you say, well, I want to ride in, in my area, in my district, I want to see what's going on, whether it's bus or MetroLink, we'll put something together. You know, we'll figure out where we, where we meet, you know, where we get on, where we get off. And, you know, I try not to tell my people that things, things are going on, because I don't want them to do anything special. But you'll probably see more transit service managers and security people than you've ever seen before, ever. But, but it's all good, because it's a good experience for everybody.
Thank you.
Just let me know.
Yeah, I, I've never ridden with Chuck Stewart before, so I think I might have to do that. That, that sounds like a unique experience.
All right, let's do it.
Yeah. I, I'm with you guys. We, we better get him while we can.
I have no question for Mr. Stewart right now, but one for Mr. Roach, speaking on the comments that Mr. Stewart made on his expiration, and I, I hope that doesn't mean permanently from this earth, but is there any update on the search and replacement, June thirtieth is quickly approaching?
Yes, Commissioner, that is, that's moving very, very well. I will have an update that will go confidentially to the Commissioners on Monday. So I need to be very careful about that because of the legal ramifications, but just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Any further comments for Mr. Stewart? Okay, hearing none. I will move on to the call for dates for future meetings. Ms. Bennett, could you please provide that?
Yes, the next Safety and Security Committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May first. The next Operations Committee meeting, as well as the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee meetings are scheduled for Thursday, May twenty second. The next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled for Friday, June twentieth. All of the meetings will begin at eight thirty. Also, if I may, just as a reminder to my Commissioners, personal financial disclosure statements for the state of Missouri and the financial interest statements for the state of Illinois are due on May first. So if you have not gotten those in yet, if you could address that, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am hearing from Mr. Roach that we do not have any business to discuss in executive session today. We do, however, have to approve the minutes from the previous executive session, which is generally done in open session unless there are any adjustments to that. So let me get through this read-through, and we might be able to avoid executive session altogether today, because the committee chairs have submitted written reports, which are included for executive session materials. The only items for consideration for the executive session agenda is the approval of the minutes for the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Commissioners Executive Session. If there are no corrections to these minutes and no discussion is needed, the board could proceed to a vote without going into executive session. So what I want to hear first from the board, and if we need to go into executive session, we certainly can. But are there any corrections to those minutes or any, anything we need to discuss? If so, we can do that in a quick executive session. If there isn't, then we can simply have a motion to approve those minutes right now. So I'll open that up to the board members, and, and no one's going to be mad at you if you say you want to discuss and go into, go into executive session. I just wanted to, to lay that out there and see if anybody has anything to discuss. Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Board of Commissioners Executive Session as presented as a closed record?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, I believe a roll call vote is needed for this, so Ms. Bennett, please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
And Commissioner?
Yes.
The motion passed.
If there is no further business, I will, in a, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I always forget, is this a voice vote or a, or a, or a roll call?
A voice vote's fine.
A voice vote is sufficient for this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a great day, everyone.
Have a great weekend, everybody.